Okay, good morning. We were called this morning. Meeting in order, the first thing is the agenda. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim, second by Jenny, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Grant will not be here today. So we'll look forward to meeting him next week again. Any citizens' concerns that brought came in or anything?
Nope.
Got nothing there? Approval of the bills and vouchers that have been passed around? And a motion to approve them?
Move approval.
Second.
And a motion by Kevin, second by Jim, to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing, we've got the approval of the minutes from June 9th, and also the Board of Appeals and Legalization meeting that we had on June the 16th.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin, to approve those two sets of minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll go up to the COVID update with Kathy McKay. All by yourself again today, or?
Yeah, so.
Can you handle that?
I don't know. Supposed to be. Maybe not as well as like that crowd.
Thank you, Kathy.
So this is, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is showing kind of the trend, as you can see, where we keep watching the confirmed cases, and then those not, no longer needing isolation deaths, and then active cases. So, you know, we continue to gradually climb, not in huge amounts, but right now, as of June 22nd, we're at 528 confirmed cases, but 474 are no longer needing isolation. So, so that's great. Right now, the active cases are 17. Now, sometimes these numbers change. So if you think about last week, some of the confirmed cases, the numbers may be a bit different. And it's just that the state catches up in reporting those numbers. So, so, you know, it's great that we're not seeing some of the huge surges, but, and the deaths are kind of staying at 37, as you can see. So we haven't had increase in deaths. The deaths that we've had in Clay County, out of the 37, 15 of those were in their age group of 90 to 100. 13 of those were in the 70s and 80s, and nine of those in the 50s and 60s. So you can see, there's a little bit of a age, age range in those deaths, in Clay County at least. So, so, you know, it's kind of somewhat maintaining. And then you see the graph, it just is a graph that's showing total cases and patients no longer needing isolation. So that's good. The hospitals are not overtaxed again, as we've talked about for a long time. They haven't, they haven't had that experience here in our metro area. So ICU beds and hospital beds have been available to the people that need them. It's different, of course, as you watch the national news. It's a bit different now, as we're seeing some of those trends in some of the southwestern states. You see Florida, Arizona, Oregon, some of those places that they're seeing a huge increase. Percentage of increase is really ramping up. Some of that, just the health experts are saying it is not completely attributed to increased testing. That's just a small factor, but more so about people really, less adherence to the public health practices of wearing a mask and social distancing. So they're seeing more of a relaxation of that in some of those southern states, particularly since Memorial Day. You saw a lot of events where people were not social distancing. So they're, they're still following that, but they're attributing that to really that lax in the virus, the messages. The virus is still around. It has not gone away. It's still highly infectious. So, so maybe that's part of why they're seeing that ramp up. We're not seeing that right now. We do anticipate that we're going to see probably ramp up in the fall. So as I talked with the Commissioner of Health yesterday, they're really planning for that we're going to see another increase with, you know, with influenza season, of course, in the fall, and then with COVID. And we won't have a vaccine. They still aren't anticipating the vaccine to be available till 2021. So with a vaccine, you know, we could get that herd immunity with, you know, 60 to 70% getting immunized, just like influenza. But it's going to be a tough fall, is how she described it, with, with influenza circulating, COVID circulating. We're going to see all of the students coming back to all of the campuses, and they're still looking at kind of scenarios of what they're going to do as far as the students staying in dorms, how they're going to social distance, the students requiring masks in the classroom. I know North Dakota is going to require testing of every student before they come back. And again, that's just a point prevalence test, so it'll just tell them that day if that student has COVID. It doesn't mean they could get it in a week, but it may stop some of those positives for some of the students carrying that at that time, and then they'll have to, you know, do the isolation and quarantine. So they're planning for all that. I'm not sure Minnesota is still talking about what they're going to do with testing students. So we've been bringing that up. Is there going to be testing of every student before they come back to MSUM and Concordia, or is there not? So, so more of that to come. We're still not seeing the, you know, 14-day case decline, so we can't really say that we're at the end of the, of the phase yet in Minnesota. So we're still, still watching those numbers. And then, of course, planning for the fall. That's, I mean, we're anticipating, as the Commissioner of Health has told us, we're anticipating it to be pretty, pretty significant. So that doesn't seem so far away when we talk about how campuses will be opening up in a couple of months. So we're really going to anticipate how that's going to look. So watching the numbers, watching what's happening across the United States. We do actually have finally got a percent of tests by county, and so Minnesota put that out. But we're not exactly sure about how that fits in with Clay County because of the testing on the North Dakota side. So if all the negative tests are actually counted on the Minnesota side, so far it says there's been 7,200 tests in Clay County. But again, you know, that, that number may be variable based on the, the negative tests that are, they may or not counting that have happened on the North Dakota side. So it still shows we have an 8.6% positivity rate. And again, not quite sure about that number either. But at least they're kind of looking at some of the models, and more information will come as, as we're watching that. Our median age of positive, positive cases again is 46, as I've described the, the ages of deaths. But the median age of positive cases in Clay County is 46. In Minnesota, it's actually 40. Now, they are saying they're also seeing a, a number of younger people getting COVID. And some of that is just, again, they're attributing it to, you know, maybe being out there, and we're sick of wearing masks, we're sick of social distancing. So it might be more, you know, the behavior. But COVID is here. We're, we're probably all sick of hearing about it, and we're all sick of hearing about wearing masks and social distancing. But that's the only thing we have right now to kind of keep people from becoming ill, and definitely want to make sure we, you know, deaths, every death is, is a sad thing, so we want to keep the deaths down. And of course, not create a surge for our hospital system. That's, that's really been good that we haven't created that in our communities yet. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Kathy, the, the positive cases, we're showing 528, patients no longer needing isolation is 474. There's a difference of 54 there. Why is that different than active cases of 17?
The deaths. Yep, the deaths in there, correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I see there, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I should have described that, but yeah, that's it.
Well, I guess if I would have done my math, I could have.
So that's really good, when you think about 17 cases that are active, that we're following. That's really a nice.
And those 17, there's contact tracing going on with this?
Correct, yes. And we're able to keep up with that. Minnesota has, as of last week, said they've, they've really caught up and are now managing, because they hired a lot of people with Minnesota Department of Health, but also public health. We have about five people doing contact tracing, but we can't keep them busy, because we just don't have the numbers right now. So they're seeing just a handful of people. So that's good. But we want to keep them in place, because we know in the fall we're going to see a, a pretty increased need for case investigation and contact tracing.
How does this compare? Have you been able to compare this with Cass County?
Yeah, Cass County, you know, they're, Cass County has, of course, been their hotspot, but they're really doing a lot of testing, and their contact tracing has been reduced. They're seeing less, so they have less people actually.
They're just across the river, that's what I asked.
Yes, exactly. And, and we, we have a Minnesota subgroup from the Red River, Red River Valley Task Force. So we're meeting with epidemiologists from the North Dakota Department of Health and our Minnesota Department of Health people, and then our local public health. So we're able to continue to talk through some of that, the cases, and, and as we are sharing information, because we know that Minnesota cases are sometimes being caught in the North Dakota system, so we're able to, to tweeze those out. And the person that is in charge of my case investigation and contact tracing is in regular communication with the epidemiologist from North Dakota Department of Health. So we're able to keep up with that.
And one final question. Are you gonna, is there going to be a major effort on educating for the flu shot this fall and getting it soon?
Yes, we, we're really going to push that. That's part of the mission for Minnesota Department of Health and local public health. We really want to push people to get the flu shot. And you know how that goes when it's seasonal. Sometimes people get a little lax about getting that vaccine, but that'll be, you know, that'll be really critical, especially when we'll have two viruses circulating and no vaccine this fall is anticipated for COVID, so.
Have they determined the, what strain of flu they're anticipating then this?
You know, I haven't heard what, what the anticipation is. We probably will hear more about that. But we do have a flu vaccine. We have vaccine on order, so we, we put that in quite a while back. So we, we probably will expect more people getting the flu vaccine. That's what I would anticipate. But again, it won't protect you from COVID. That's a different vaccine. But at least, you know, when you got two viruses and both pretty significant viruses, you definitely at least want to get protected from the one that we have a vaccine for. And then hope that that vaccine for COVID comes earlier in 2021. So challenges ahead for sure. No more Wednesday press briefings either. They've kind of ended those for a while. So we'll see if that ramps up again in the fall.
Well, you and your staff put in a lot of hours on this. Thank you for your.
Yeah, it's been crazy, but we're slowing down for a little bit, so that'll be good. Thank you.
I noticed on, like on deaths, you know, the deaths are mostly the, the higher age. But if I look at the cases, most of the cases are from 20 to 40 years old. That's where most of the cases. What is it, I know most cases with the deaths, they say underlying costs or stuff like that. But how do the people from 20 to 40, how are they recovering? Are they going to the hospital? Are they just taking, staying at home and recovering? I mean, how did they recover from the flu that their senior citizens aren't recovering from the flu?
Most in that age category are able to recover at home. So we're not seeing a, a need of hospitalizations for the younger.
What do they do, though? Do they take medicine, or they just stay at home and that's it?
Yep, you just stay at home. There really isn't any medicine to take. So, and, and many of them, you see a variety of symptoms, from a lot of symptoms to, I talked with one individual in his 20s, and he had actually no symptoms. He act, he could not pinpoint any symptoms that he had, and yet he was positive for COVID. So you see the wide range of mild cough to all of the, all of the symptoms they list. But it also depends on your, your health condition. So if, if you have underlying health conditions, it's more challenging to recover.
So when you're saying that the person that you talked to had no symptoms, how did he know he had COVID, or did he?
He, he was in contact with another positive case.
And they checked him in the end?
And they checked him. But he had actually no symptoms. That was really, that's the first time I talked with someone that actually, he couldn't pinpoint any symptoms. He didn't have body aches, cough, respiratory symptoms at all, so. But he tested positive, so he stayed home for his 10 days, so, yeah.
Okay.
Kathy, I have a question in terms of tracking the costs of COVID. I know that we've had discussion early on in terms of how much it was costing us to fight COVID. Do you have a rough estimate where that number stands?
Oh, boy, I absolutely do not. We have a line item specifically for COVID. So all of the staff that are doing any COVID work are in a particular cost center. But I haven't talked with Lori about what the, what the cost is, so I don't even have a.
When you are able to catch your breath, I think it would be helpful for us to understand a little bit about the cost.
Yep, we can do that for sure. We had a little bit of, of funding from the Minnesota Department of Health, but it's, it's very minimal to cover some of the costs. The governor talked about more funding coming out, but we'll see if that occurs. But we had a little bit, so. Okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next thing we're going to consider is a resolution concerning homelessness prevention and assistance, and homework starts with home program. This is Emma Schmidt from Prairie's Community Action Partnership. Okay, you can tell us what that's about.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name's Emma Schmidt with CAP LP, Lakes and Prairies Community Action. And I'm here today looking for some support for a resolution in support of homework starts with home. And we know that you all are supportive of this project, which we're very grateful for being recipients of levy funds to help support this project. It's been instrumental in the success of the project. And we're very excited that we've received additional funding for this program. So the goal of this program is to help families and youth find and obtain housing for folks that are homeless with the goal of supporting strong school attendance in order for the kids to receive a quality education. So the Clay County HRA was the lead applicant for this application, this grant application. And there's two streams of funding for this project. It's Housing Trust Fund and Family Prevention Homeless and Assistance Program. And CAP LP is the administrator of the FHPAP funds, since we're already a recipient of that grant. And as part of state statute for receiving FHPAP funds, we need to go to every county commission and receive authorization to help execute the contract. So just to give you a little update on the project too, we have 45 partners involved in it, 14 schools. In Clay County, we have five schools, Barnesville, DGF, Holly, Moorhead, and new this year is Yulin Hiderdal. They agreed to be a part of the project too, so we're excited to have another school. And we've assisted families that are escaping domestic violence in the shelter, people that are staying with friends or family, and, you know, difficult situations. So the households are families, youth-headed families. We've helped youth that have children of their own that are going to school. And this last grant cycle, we also helped three unaccompanied youths, so youth that are just on their own, no parents, involved in their situations. So again, Clay County HRA helps do the, they administer the rental assistance part of this project. And then CAP LP, with FHPAP funds, administers the supportive services. So at CAP LP, we're helping people call landlords, look for apartments, help people get moved into places and their episode of homelessness, and then help make sure that they're stable once they get into a place. So we're excited, we're going to be hiring two new staff people for this additional round of funding. And we're excited to help house more families and youth. So today, we're here to just receive an approval for the resolution that we brought before you today.
Mr. Chair. I, as, I, as you know, sit on the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership Board. And I think that, one, it's great to have the homework starts at home piece in Clay County. I, I think it's very instrumental and, and important for magnitude of reasons. But specifically during COVID, I have been impressed at Community Action's ability to change the stream, because kids aren't necessarily attending school in person. And the reports that I've heard from Community Action about the attendance and the interaction with families has really gone up in a time when you would probably think it would, would relax a little bit. So I think that's really important. The other thing is, as we've all heard, the education model for kids during COVID is challenging in the best of circumstances. It was, you know, I had kids that, it was very difficult to keep them engaged. And so to have this for kids that are facing all of these other challenges in, in terms of housing, I, I think is beneficial. I appreciate the fact that you've added an additional school in Clay County. I think that helps to serve as many kids in Clay County as possible. So I commend you for reaching out to an additional district.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2020-20.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Before we get to that, I mean, okay, take that motion. But do we, are we supposed to have a resolution in front of us here? Do we have a resolution?
We do.
Did not, I guess I did not get that.
Here you go.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny, to approve the Resolution 2020-20 for supporting the Family Homelessness Prevention and Assistance Program Funds and the Homework Starts With Home Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, mail it in, passes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that would go to Execute Forms for Fieldcrest Townhomes Application to the Minnesota Housing. Dara Lee, and Steve, and Rhonda, I suppose. Everybody that's left in the room, come on up.
Good morning.
Hi, Dara.
If you will indulge me, Chair and Commissioners, if I could just follow up on what great partners CAP LP has been for us with the Homework Starts With Home program, and what great partners Clay County has been with us for that program. Some of you may recollect that, perhaps some of my begging last year for the HRA tax levy approval, that I said we would utilize that money in order to try and leverage more funds. So for the Homework Starts With Home program, we used $75,000 worth of those levy funds, and we leveraged 1.7 million. That was the, about half of what was available statewide. There was 3.5 million appropriated. So our award was larger than Hennepin Counties or Ramses. And so thank you very, very much for that, because I don't think we would have been able to do that but for that showing of that local investment. And our great partnership, like Emma was saying, we have 45 partners, including Clay County Social Services and a lot of great agencies in the community. So thank you. And Les Baki, our secretary, is with me. And I think I would be remiss if I didn't start out by saying, in light of COVID, the incredible uncertainties that are facing all of us in our budgets, our agency is not going to do a tax levy this year. We feel like there is so much uncertainty out there. But I'm not promising we won't come back next year, because the grant cycle from Homework Starts With Home, we actually have two of those going at the same time. In 2021, we will be applying again. So we may be coming back and asking for funds to try and leverage additional money. We've been really successful, and we want to see youth and child homeless end in our community. So, so we're happy to be saying that we're, we aren't going to ask this year, but we are saying we, we may ask next year. But we try not to, unless it is critical, unless we think we can turn around and multiply that money to the benefit of our, our community. And we appreciate the support when we have asked.
If I can interject with one question while you're talking about that. So when this COVID deal that's going on right now, and I know the state legislature ended without anything going on, there's supposed to be significant federal dollars related to COVID that are supposed to be passed down to counties and to cities. And I'm wondering, was any of that for the purpose of housing?
Not that state allocation. The legislature has, there's a proposal for Minnesota Housing for $100 million for emergency rental assistance for COVID-impacted households. They've put that request in both to the governor's pot to be dispersed, and, and they're also doing a parallel track at the legislature. As you said, nothing has happened at that point. Their initial belief is that they will try and disperse that through the same mechanisms as the Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Program, so that would be coming to CAP LP. It would be, depending upon the timing of this, it may be a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. So it will probably take all of us as partners to try and support that, to make sure that families who have lost their jobs because of COVID or because of the COVID illness are then not losing their housing. There's a temporary moratorium on evictions as long as the governor's emergency powers are in place. But we don't know when that will end, or what that result will be.
Well, that, people losing their homes would be a bad deal. And, and, you know, obviously with the financial constraints of a lot of people, right? That's why I asked the question. If, if any of that money that's supposed to be passing through is, is going to be directed towards those who may have lost their ability to pay their mortgage payments, or whatever.
That, that is the hope for, of many of us. But, you know, contacting your legislators at the governor's office is always, right now, there's a lot of needs. And expressing how important that is, is really important for anybody who's concerned about that. Because competing demands, that we're unfortunately all aware of. Otherwise, I'll probably go to.
I don't know, Steve, I was gonna, so I, at one point, we had heard, you know, about, I don't know, how many millions of dollars Clay County was supposed to get. And is any criteria have to do with anything like that that you're aware of?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we're, not that I'm aware of. We're in the process of working with AMC. AMC is going to hopefully provide us some ongoing guidance of what will be allowed to be reimbursed through this program. I'm not aware that any housing has, is a part of that.
I mean, we, you know, we're, Commissioner Moser asked a question this morning too about how many of our businesses are not going to be opening back up on account of this. And that's, that's a critical component too for us. But at the same point in time, then you can ask the question going down to the individual, how many people are, could end up losing their homes over this? And I, that's, that's extremely important, I think, to all of us. So, so any, any action where, based on the federal appropriations for COVID that went on, and there was, I think, $3 trillion, I just think is what they said had gone out for various components. But any of that, that we can get filtered to Clay County, we should all be working together to get that.
Yes, and I have to also just, for the families of our residents, we serve a very vulnerable population. We have had a resident who's passed away due to COVID. We currently have people who are on event in local hospitals for COVID. We've had COVID in a few of our buildings. We've had staff members who've come down with COVID. So, you know, it's taken its toll on everybody. We serve an elderly and disabled population, many with underlying health issues. So we've tried to be as careful as we can. You'll see I was wearing my mask coming in. Our offices have remained open by appointment only as an essential service throughout this. And I'm very grateful to our staff who has gone into locations where we know that there is COVID and put themselves out there on the line. So I just have to add a little thank you to them, and to our other residents who've been very supportive. But I'm here today because in the world of uncertainty, we are certain that we have a property that we own that could use some improvements. It is located in South Morehead, right around Queens Park, on that two-square-block area between Belzley and 34th Avenue South and 18th and 20th Street. The only thing that is there are townhomes called Fieldcrest Town Homes in Queens Park. The city of Morehead has just invested $68,000 this year in upgrading Queens Park, which we're really grateful and excited about. And we are hoping to apply to Minnesota Housing for funds to completely renovate that development. Of course, the funding is dependent upon legislature approving, appropriating some bonds, which is as unknown as everything else is at this time. And it appears that they will probably not be back in session until this application is due. And so we will be submitting the application and hoping for the best. As a matter of kind of background, some of you may recollect that this property was being sold back in the fall of 2016. The Clay County HRA, the Morehead Public Housing Agency, the city of Morehead, and Clay County all had the option of coming in to match the purchase price and to purchase in order to help preserve it as affordable housing. This property was built in 1980, and it has always been affordable housing for families in Morehead. It is one of two developments in Morehead that serves family and was funded under this federal resource. And there was, the contract expires this coming December. And so Minnesota Housing really reached out and encouraged one of us as entities to purchase this. I remember Administrator Berg said, "Yeah, Dara, we're okay with that not being us." You go ahead and try that one. And the city of Morehead and the Morehead PHA were of a similar mindset. So we were able, with the help of Bell State Bank, to make an offer and close on that property within a three-month timeframe. We bought it for $2 million. It had significant deferred maintenance needs on the property. For example, when the snow melted in the spring, we closed in January. We had live wires poking out of the ground from an electric, from a light pole that had been removed, but the wires had not been disconnected. And we had, we found throughout the last three and a half years all sorts of interesting items such as that. And so we would like to preserve this housing. We have over 100 families on a waiting list to move into it in its current condition. But we would like to make it better. It doesn't have, these are all families with children. And there are no in-unit washers and dryers, no dishwashers. And those are kind of basic amenities that most rental properties in Morehead have at this point in time. These don't. They were built 40 years ago, and they are very basic. It has siding that was vinyl with lots of little holes in it. It has, one of my favorite things is I went along on an inspection, and we went to open up a storage door, and I said, "Oh, I'll open it." And it came off in my hand and fell down. And I was like, "Apparently, that needs a repair." So there are critical needs. And so we are putting this application into Minnesota Housing. We also are indicating in the application that we would reserve some of these units for folks who either have experienced homelessness. And we are looking at this in conjunction with that Homework Starts with Home program, because one of the things that we've said is we're going to put every resource we can into housing families with kids who go to school in Clay County. And the other component would be for adults with disabling conditions. That's who we're serving right now. So it's really not changing who we're serving. It's trying to be more targeted and making sure that those services are actually available and the households are readily identified as in need of those services. CAP LP has agreed to be our service provider on this project as well. As we've discussed our partnerships, I said when I was putting some of the information together, I realized that we share six funding sources with CAP LP, and two of those are through Clay County Social Services. And so we have a long history of working collaboratively to try and provide this type of stability, and we hope that we would continue to receive your support to say that there is a need for affordable housing in Clay County and that this development is one of those things that will help meet those needs. We're not asking for any funds on this. We're not asking to enter into any new contracts. We're not changing who we're serving with any significant extent. But we are trying to add onsite offices, because we think a few more eyes on the property during that time and an improved security system would also help to enhance that neighborhood.
My first question would be, when you talk about how all the things that need to be done to this property, why would you purchase something like that?
Well, it was to preserve that contract. These are very rare items that HUD entered into a contract with the original developer back in 1980 and said, "We'll pay the rent that the tenants aren't paying." Tenants only pay 30% of their income towards rent. The federal government comes in and picks up the difference. The problem with this original 40-year-old contract is that it only did slight cost-of-living adjustments during the 40 years, and our rents have increased much more significantly than those cost-of-living adjustments. So right now, the rent levels are at 75% of what market is. Part of this redevelopment is also renewing that contract with HUD. But it would be renewed at what the current market levels are at this time. So it would increase the cash flow into this development so that we wouldn't end up in the same position we're in now. So there'd be sufficient resources to do the upkeep and to do the repairs and to keep it in good shape. We also looked at, is it cheaper just to tear it down and rebuild it? Because it needs quite a bit. But it's about 75% of the cost to do this complete rehab and to add those services in place as it would be just to reconstruct, and that wouldn't even include the demo on it. So, like I said, we have looked at many, many, many options in this three years, trying to figure out what is the best thing for our tenants who live there, because we are not going to be displacing anybody, except for, like, we'll have them move over a unit while we're rehabbing theirs. And for that community as a whole.
So what would happen if you don't get these funds? I mean, if the legislature doesn't pass, and you don't get these funds, what's going to happen to that property?
That's a good question.
Okay.
So we're looking, those are another thing where we have about three different tracks. One of them is, we could renew the contract for a short period of time and get the increased rents in order to make the very basic repairs needed. It wouldn't change any of the amenities, and it wouldn't change, I'd say, the neighborhood, the way it functions within the neighborhood. But it would be enough with that increased cash flow from rents to do the most critical items, so that it's a safe place to live. Another option would be that we would just let that go market rate. Our tenants who live there would receive the vouchers that we administer, those Housing Choice vouchers, so that they could choose to continue to live at that property or they could move anyplace else in the community. Those would be the two biggest options. One, yeah, it gets really weedy here, because one thing we could try and do, then, is transfer that contract that we're giving up over into those 24 units of public housing that I was here a couple of years ago that we disposed of to ourselves, and re-project-based that contract. So we believe this is the best option for what we're applying for. But we do have probably about 10 other choices on the table.
And let me clarify, sorry, let me clarify quick. The $68,000 from Morehead went to revamp the park area or the building?
The park. They completely redid Queens Park.
Okay.
They removed all the...
No, I think, among other things, I think, one, it's important to see that the city of Morehead has a buy-in in terms of upgrading that area to continue to beautify it or serve residents that may or may not live there. I think it's also really important in your application, you know, that you say that there's about 98 households on the waiting list, most of which contain members with disabling conditions and who are experiencing homelessness. And there are also units reserved for those with high priority homelessness issues. You know, I'm concerned that, one, if this isn't directly coming from Clay County tax levy dollars, but I mean, we're still, there's still money has to come from somewhere. But it seems as though you're serving a broad spectrum of citizens while also addressing the fact that the rental rates may have not been up to what the fair market standard is. So I think you're, if you were coming asking for support on this and not doing that, I would be concerned about that. But I think to acknowledge that that change hasn't happened and probably should have to help maintain a property, I think, is important.
And the city of Morehead, if I can just follow up, is examining whether or not with their community development block grant funds for next year's proposal, if they'd be able to allocate some to this project as well? So we are having those conversations.
Mr. Chair, in following up to your questions on the maintenance of this facility, what, obviously, HRA has an awful lot of other buildings. And what, how do you internally deal? Do you set aside a certain portion of funds on an annual basis that goes into maintenance? And why did this facility get to? It's all, the way it's described, it's almost like a blighted property.
We're getting close.
You know, so why, you know, what went on? And why isn't that, some of that done on an annual basis?
This wasn't our property. We just bought this in January of 17, when it was already in this condition.
Okay.
The housing authority has invested over $180,000 of our unrestricted reserves into trying to get it up to basic standards. So, yes, for the properties that we own and operate, we have amounts that go into reserve accounts so that if there's significant capital need issues that come up, that we have the funds to do this. This was not our property.
Yeah, well, I guess it's been years since 2017, and I didn't know to what degree it was already deteriorated.
Yeah, it was there.
But I guess, I don't, I've never gotten into your, you know, how you budget and all that type of thing. But it's, it would seem to be a must to have a portion of your funds just to keep buildings.
Yes, we have a policy of a minimum of $3,000 per unit in reserves.
Okay.
We're not always able to get there, depending upon the economic environment. But we do have a policy to make sure that we have reserves available in case things occur. Yes. And unfortunately, we just have had to put so much, one, there's not sufficient cash flow off of this property, which is why the prior owners said they were unable to keep up with those basic needs, and it's true. But they were for-profit owners, and they were like, "We just can't keep on losing money this way," which I've said a number of times, I see that as the role of government, to come in and do what the private market cannot do. And this was just a losing proposition. But, two, you have to be able to operate as a business and keep those reserves at an adequate level so that if things happen, that you have those in place, yes. And the way that this deal is structured, if we're able to get the funding, there would be reserves capitalized, and $18,000 per year would be going into a reserve account.
Mr. Chair, on your request, so it talks about your thorough analysis and applying for approximately $5 million in housing infrastructure bonds. I get the interior, the washer, dryer, dishwasher, I understand all of that. You know, improving the exterior, but the additional garages, I kind of question. What's available now currently? So is there space to build in additional garages?
Yes. And there's 20 current garages for 40 units. And the proposal, we would like to add, actually, there's room to add a garage for each unit. But the garages are very small, single stalls. The funding would, we are looking at adding eight additional stalls. So it'd be a total of 28 for 40 units. So there would not be a stall for every unit in the current rendition. And we believe that there's the demand for that. One of the things is curb appeal, that if people have a garage to put their bikes and outside play toys, et cetera, in, it just is a more attractive view for the neighborhood.
And I guess my, and I understand that. I just want to make sure, one, is this $5 million just you pitch to the legislature, and what you get, you get, and you prioritize from there? You know, and if that were to happen, I would hope that interior upgrades would trump what maybe a garage addition would be.
And that's exactly what we've already faced. When we got the initial numbers down, we wanted to do 20 garages. We cut that back to eight when our funding wouldn't go as far. So we'd be in complete agreement with you that we thought that the onsite service option and those interior exterior upgrades to the units to keep them intact and decent for the long term. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to have a good piece of property to offer our residents. And we want to be, just blend in with the community. We have contacted all of our immediate neighbors. It's a multifamily area. We actually are one of the neighbors, so we were very supportive. But all of our neighbors, nobody has expressed any concerns. One has offered to help in whatever way he can. One of the property managers said, "Hey, I managed that development for my last job for a couple of years. I love that development, whatever you need." And so we're very grateful that our neighbors are extremely supportive of this. And like I said, we want to be a good neighbor, and we want this to be a good place to live.
I guess I look at your visions of the future a lot different than mine, and I hope yours work out. I mean, if I go buy some piece of property and hope to get $5 million from someone else, you know, that's a heck of a plan, you know, so I hope it works out.
Yeah, there would also be a mortgage on it of 2.235 million, because that's what the rents can support. So the dilemma here is that to keep the units affordable and to make them decent after 40 years, the plain reality is the markets don't work that way, which is why Minnesota Housing has these types of bonds and structures available.
So you're going to have federal money available? I mean, I guess you say the federal money pays for 70% or 75% of it. Is that money going to be available?
Yes, the contract would be renewed at 100% of current market. Right now, it's at 75%, but if we're able to do these renovations, we'd be able to get the rents up so that it can be sustainable for the long term.
All right. Any more? Do you got, Rhonda, you got anything?
So the role of the county is, and I'm not sure what went in your packet, if it was just the memo?
We've got the housing.
We've got the...
Okay, so the other two documents are the documents that, per your approval, then I would sign, which basically, the first one, the letter of confirmation from the local human services department. On the second page in Section 2, it just really talks about what the role is, and that is to review the supportive housing proposal and assess the overall need and overall feasibility of the proposal. So that's kind of what we're doing today in previous conversations we have had with Dara in the application. And you'll notice the note there that we've talked about before in terms of completion of the form, doesn't constitute a commitment by the county to fund services and is not to be considered an approval of the proposed housing side of services. It's really that we've been engaged in the process. We understand what's happening. We agree that there's a need for supportive housing in our community. And so then I would sign this document as well as the disability narrative, which just really outlines the services that'll be available to the folks with disabilities in those units.
Okay, so clarify a minute. What is Clay County's involvement in this? What are we, what are we being asked to approve? Or just to prove that they can apply for this?
It's really recognizing and agreeing that there is a need for this in our community and that we understand their application, that we have reviewed the feasibility of it, and we feel that it will be...
No, it's basically, they want to make sure that we've made you informed that we're going to apply and that this need actually exists in our community. When I wrote that originally draft, we had 98 folks on the waiting list. Now it's over 100.
I mean, I definitely agree there's a need. I'll go along with that part of it, you know, but, boy, the funding part scares me. So, okay, very good.
And I think that's, you know, and that's what we talked about here is that it would be hard for us to, and that's why I've asked a question of Rhonda in the past, is that when we get into these contracts... when we get into these contracts, there's, there's state and federal dollars that are committed to this program, and I think what Commissioner Gross might have been getting at as well is, what happens if that money disappears? Does then that liability come back to the county? And I've gotten assurances from Rhonda and from our county attorney's office that it does not. And that, that's real, that's, that's extremely important because it's one thing, and there is no question of the need, I, but if it were all end up going back and being put on to the property tax of everybody else, now all of a sudden, if you didn't have that availability, those state and federal dollars, now all of a sudden, there's, you're probably risking putting more and more people out of being able to afford their own home.
Yeah, our worst case scenario is we would put it back on the market.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and what we purchased it for was a market price, so.
In term, in terms of need, and this, I remember going back and there was a controversy over the bridesguy when that process was being done, and, and there was people who maybe didn't like where it was going, but I even recall back then, there was over ninety percent of the people agreed with the need, you know, and I, and I don't know that that's changed any, based on what I'm hearing, the, when, if you still have the waiting list that you have, you know, I can't dispute the need.
So we'd be looking for your approval for me to sign the letter of confirmation and the disability narrative for Clay County HRA's application.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to request to execute the forms.
Second, and we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to execute these forms? Any further discussion?
Well, the, the one nice thing about this too, that I think it's, because this is a property that currently now is owned by HRA, and it's part of what they're doing here is they're, they're also gonna improve it from the neighborhood standpoint too. So I, I think, you know, the exterior and seeing all that, the more, the more you have something that looks nice, the better, the better all values are, right? That's just pretty common sense. So I think that five million dollars that's going into that will help surrounding properties as well.
And to be honest, that's one of the reasons we decided to apply for these funds, rather than put it back on the market or do some just basic things, is we want to revitalize that entire area. That area has some a lot of older multifamily, multifamily developments, apartment units, and we think that it's worth that reinvestment in that neighborhood in order to make the neighborhood better for the whole.
Well, you say the legislature comes, says, well, you requested five million, but we're only gonna give you two and a half million. Is this project still a go?
Yeah, we have a, we have a number of different scenarios depending upon funding sources. We actually have applied for a million dollars from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, we're applying for four point nine million is what the actual amount is for the housing infrastructure bonds, and then we are looking at that mortgage of two point two three five million. So even if we were just able to refinance with the mortgage and do the contract, we would have a half a million dollars to do those basic repairs. There's also a couple of other Minnesota housing funding sources that we would be extremely competitive with to get a minimum of about two to two and a half million for, for repairs.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor of the motion?
All right.
All right. Posed? Okay, motion passes, so.
Thank you.
Move forward on it. Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going committee reports. Jenny, you wanna start us out today?
Sure. Last week, I neglected to report on a human resources meeting I had with Lakeview Prairies Community Action. We reviewed the executive director evaluations and discussed COLA questions that human resources had. Last week, I attended MetroCog, we had month end reports, continued to have some tweaking of the discussion about the 2021 budget, and there is currently an assisted planning, planner opening, they had the virtual meeting for the Parkway, and that's planned, and with diversion, diversion area that they're talking about a rec plan. I had conversations with the Metro Executive Cog Director, MetroCog Executive Director and Lakeland Mental Health CEO in regards to the current conversation nationwide we're seeing in, in terms of race relations, making sure that if there's any areas to which they felt there were gaps in services, they would address, they currently feel confident that their services are providing the needs of all the people that come to them. Yesterday, I had the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting, and when Zoom meetings work, they're great, and when they don't, they don't. That one, I don't know if Zoom had an update yesterday, but a lot of us had some connectivity issues, but we were able to get all of the access sheets, access indicators to us prior to that, the key performance indicators, program margins for the Morehead sites look great, there are some, some issues going forward in terms of budgeting that they're continuing to monitor based on issues presented because of COVID, so I appreciate their responsiveness to that. Updates on Minnesota legislation, I think a lot of us just continue to watch St. Paul and discussions there and hope that something worthwhile can be hammered out there. We did discuss a donation that came in and talked further about a West Central Initiative grant. Then last night, I was able to phone into the last half of the Buffalo Red Watershed Board meeting, continued to have some landowner concerns in Clay County that they're addressing the Dewayne Hansen issue, and then did briefly discuss the gentleman that came to our meeting prior, his concern. That concludes my reports.
Go ahead. Okay, last Friday, we were in, I was in Purim for a Prairie Lakes Budget Meeting, reviewing the 2020 budget and getting ready to establish the 2021 budget. We did go over some COVID-19 impacts to the facility. We do have an issue that's, was brought up last year regarding the property insurance, and it sounds like we're gonna be covered for the remainder of this year, and then after that, if we want MCIT to continue the coverage, they'll do it, but we, we will pay one hundred percent of the cost, and that will be, we're talking several hundred thousand dollars now with the changes. So we're reviewing our options of self-insuring or going along with other, the other waste energy facilities in Minnesota to see if we can buy a combined policy, reviewing those options. But in, in any event, it's gonna have an impact on, on that facility's budget. The current year, they are looking at a, expenditures over revenues of about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, anticipate the end of the year. The good news though is that we did have seven hundred thousand dollars reserved for internal service fund, so we could tap into that and it would still, we still wouldn't have, we'd still have the money to pay those bills. We looked at the five-year capital improvement plan, some things are, are done and some things might be put on hold. And then yesterday, I do want to say too that I, last week, I attended what ended up being a total of eight days of the contested case hearing. I, I did sit in on almost all of that last week. And then yesterday morning, we had a executive meeting of the Diversion Authority, and a recap of the contested case, just to give you an idea here, timeline, I think it's, you know, people might have some interest in this. Again, there was eight days of testimony in the hearing that concluded last Wednesday. The ti, the upcoming timeline is as follows, on July fifteenth, the case is to remain open until July fifteenth to offer additional testimony regarding upstream impacts. On July fifteenth, parties may submit their joint draft findings of fact and conclusion of law. On July twenty-ninth, parties are required to submit closing briefs, so there were no closing arguments that were done during the trial itself. August twelfth, parties are required to submit reply briefs, and August thirteenth is the date that the judge starts to draft the decision and the recommendation, and that likely is a sixty-day period. And keep in, keep in mind again that that, whatever that judge decides is a recommendation to the Commissioner of the DNR. October twelfth is the estimated date of the judge's decision, and again, that could go longer, it's just an estimate. November twelfth is an estimated date of, of when the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Commissioner's finding, final decision, but that can also be longer, sixty days from the judge's decision, so anything, anything regarding the October, November dates are simply estimates at this point in time, but that's, before that's gone, they went through, there were quite a number of witnesses during that eight, eight-day period, so that concludes my report.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was absent last week, the previous week. Wednesday, June tenth, I attended the, along with Commissioner Wayland, the Northwest Radio Emergency Communications Board, and discussion centered around issues relating to stress on the system during the peaceful protests and resultant things that followed that in Fargo and how that overwhelmed our system because we had so many public safety organizations taking part in that in northwestern Minnesota. They had sent deputies from various counties, and they were all having difficulty because of the system being so stressed at that time. And so that was that. Then on Friday, the twelfth, I attended the AMC District Meeting via Zoom with the other commissioners, and I'm sure that was reported on last week. Thank you.
Okay. I had the, the one meeting I had was the Historical Society. What we cover is the Comstock House, which is gonna be closed this year because they can't meet the requirements for COVID-19, so they're just gonna close, close the Comstock House for this year. The Historical Society received about ninety thousand dollars for PPE stuff that's gonna help, help them out to keep going, a lot of that's gonna go to salaries. You got some money laying around, make some donations to the Historical Society because they're gonna get matching funds from the FN Visitors Bureau. They are open now, people are coming in, it's not quite as busy as it used to be, but people are starting to come in there. There's a limit of fifty-two people at a time that can be there along with staff, they only allowed so many people in the building, and I don't know how it went last Friday because they had a group of eighty coming in there, so I don't know how they did that, but hopefully that worked out okay. We got a couple of vacancies on the board, so if anybody's interested in becoming a board member in the Historical Society, let me know or let Marie know at the Historical Society. They're also concerned about how they're gonna do their annual meeting, they have an annual meeting every year, and I guess that's what you would do, is have an annual meeting every year, huh? Okay, but they're looking at how they're gonna perform that, but it's gonna be done by virtual or whatever. Other than that, I had a resident concern in Cromwell Township that I spent some time with yesterday, and that's my report. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday, I met with the sheriff, emptying on a series of issues with the Sheriff's Department, had a department evaluation that afternoon. On the eighteenth, we had county management, we received update from Kathy, we had some budget update discussions, and also talked about the legislative update at that point. That afternoon, I participated in AMC Conference with other county administrators across the state, we received a legislative update with, from Julie Ring at that point, and I think to our conversation earlier, Julie expressed a great deal of frustration with, with the legislature and not distributing the CARES Act funding. If you recall, the President actually signed this into law back in March twenty-seven, so funding has been sitting in St. Paul, trying to figure out how to necessarily distribute it. The agreed-upon amount that, that ended up not being passed would have provided Clay County about seven point seven million dollars to, to deal with different issues. And again, part of Julie's frustration is the lack of clarity of what, what those dollars are going to be allowed to be spent on, and so AMC is working, working to, to do that. They've also provided us a list from NACO, a number of counties are providing or hiring consultants due to the confusion and utilizing consultants to ensure that the dollars that they want to spend are being spent properly. We also talked about reopening statuses across the state, there are some courthouses who have opened completely. Most of those counties are counties that have not seen the impacts of COVID that, that we have, but there are a number of counties that are looking at doing some reopenings at the end of this month. If there were, there were a few positive things that did come out of the legislature, I think Commissioner Moser mentioned, there, there was a small business relief grant of about sixty million dollars that passed. It is for fit businesses of fifty employees or less that were affected by the COVID, COVID-19 pandemic. It's a ten thousand dollar grant that, that would become available, it opens up today, and so it's, if you go to the DEED website, you would have the ability to apply for that, that grant, those grant dollars. And also, human resources, human services has received over sixty waivers during this pandemic to, to ensure that we provide service and also for our county to provide payment. The legislator, legislature did approve a sixty-day extension of those waivers once the piece of emergency ends, so it will allow our, our human services the opportunity to transition back into a past, past COVID, or post-COVID situation. I did, on the nineteenth, I met with Darren in Georgia on, on a mailroom issue that we're gonna be discussing that pick today. On Friday, I also spoke with Robert Wilson, Cass County Administrator, on a series of shared issues. Yesterday, spoke with Tim Dent on some IT matters related to, to COVID in the future, and also, we have participated, excuse me, last Friday on a closing for some volunteer properties, sales through the MCCJPA, we'll have a number of those closings happening over the next few Fridays. And yesterday, spent a great deal of time working on the department head evaluations. I would just note that, for the public, that this week, there will be letters, or excuse me, there'll be, there'll be ads in, in all of the Fargo, Fargo, in the Fargo Forum, Harley, Holly, and Barnesville newspaper for the Buffalo Red managers. We have three openings, two three-year, three-year positions and one one-year position, and so if you, you are interested, please submit letters of interest to, to us through, excuse me, July fourteenth, feevers. And also, just wanted to follow up, I did send a letter to, to the City of Georgetown, City Clerk, at the board's request, encouraging the council to work with AT2S on the environmental monitoring easement on the city-owned property. Tammy had indicated that she would be providing this letter, the letter that we provide her to their council at their next board meeting in July. And again, lastly, I would just note that for our citizens, next week is the fifth Tuesday, and so we do not have a board meeting scheduled. That concludes my mumbling report.
Thank you for that. Yes, there's no meeting next week, so I, I hope the staff can do without us for two weeks here, so. All right, anything else? Your turn. Your turn.